This is almost a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles on this Friday, the 12th of January 2001. Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant Council President Pro Tem, serving as Presiding Officer for the moment. Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter shall be joining us shortly. Council President John Ferraro remains excused due to recovering from his illness. This council meeting can be heard live via council phone and is presently being viewed on LA City View Channel 35. This meeting will be repeated this evening at 7:30 on LA City View Channel 35, and all council sessions for this week will be repeated on Sunday beginning at 10 a.m. until the council sessions are concluded. I believe we do not have a quorum as of yet, but we do have some presentations. First and foremost, we do have the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles with us this morning for a presentation and a proclamation. So at this time, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, the Honorable Richard J. Reardon.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. What is the second president pro tem?
Rudy.
Rudy. Thank you, Councilmen Savornich. It's a great honor for me to be here this morning with some very outstanding Angelenos. And the people who are with me this morning are the ones who helped on the AIDS Walk more than anybody. They got the most sponsors, they walked or ran faster than anybody else. And as a result, we raised over $3 million for AIDS. Specifically for AIDS Project Los Angeles. And I can tell you also, which I'm most proud of, we beat the heck out of the county this year. The city was the best governmental agency. I would like now to invite Dr. Eric Bingham to join me up here. Dr. Bingham is a board member of APLA. He walked in the AIDS Walk, and he's a great friend and a great leader. Eric? Here you are. Want to say something?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. This is almost a meeting of the City Council of the City of Los Angeles on this Friday, the 12th of January 2001. Councilman Rudy Savornich Jr., Assistant Council President Pro Tem, serving as Presiding Officer for the moment. Council President Pro Tem Ruth Galanter shall be joining us shortly. Council President John Ferraro remains excused due to recovering from his illness. This council meeting can be heard live via council phone and is presently being viewed on LA City View Channel 35. This meeting will be repeated this evening at 7:30 on LA City View Channel 35. And all council sessions for this week will be repeated on Sunday beginning at 10:00 a.m. until the council sessions are concluded. I believe we do not have a quorum as of yet, but we do have some presentations. First and foremost, we do have the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles with us this morning for a presentation and a proclamation. So at this time, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, the Honorable Richard J. Riordan. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. What is the second President Pro Tem?
Rudy.
Rudy. Thank you, Councilman Savornich. It's a great honor for me to be here this morning with some very outstanding Angelinos. And the people who are with me this morning are the ones who helped on the AIDS Walk more than anybody. They got the most sponsors. They walked or ran faster than anybody else. And as a result, we raised over $3 million for AIDS. And specifically for AIDS Project Los Angeles. And I can tell you also, which I'm most proud of, we beat the heck out of the county this year. The city was the best governmental agency. I would like now to invite Dr. Eric Bing to join me up here. Dr. Bing is a board member of APLA. He walked in the AIDS Walk, and he's a great friend and a great leader. Eric? Here you are. You want to say something?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Many people would say that AIDS is over. However, at APLA, we have four new clients a day. Many people would also say that AIDS volunteerism was over. However, as you can see, AIDS volunteerism is really alive and well in Los Angeles here today. So on behalf of the Board of Directors and staff, and most of all, the clients of AIDS Project Los Angeles, I'd like to thank you for inviting us here today for this award ceremony. The first awards will be presented to this year's outstanding volunteers. They're a remarkable group of individuals who have donated a tremendous amount of time and energy. And as I call each one up, I'm going to briefly introduce them in alphabetical order. This first friendly woman and her dog, Brauna, came to our office at least three times a week throughout the 24-week campaign. Although you may not recognize her name, you'll most certainly remember her as one of the faces on the AIDS Walk posters throughout Los Angeles. Please help me welcome Elaine Abraham. For the next recipient, it is her fifth year receiving this award. She volunteers many hours at the AIDS Walk Los Angeles Project Angel Food and other charitable organizations. She is also an outstanding fundraiser and raised over $3,000 herself. Please help me welcome Pearl Frankel. As a husband-and-wife team, they never fail to amaze the AIDS Walk Los Angeles staff with their energy, commitment, and incredible sign-making abilities. They are one of our favorite couples, Patricia O'Brien and Peter Cannon. A longtime volunteer who is always willing to help out at the drop of a hat. She was instrumental in running this year's brand-new Star Walker sign-in area on the day of the walk. Please help me welcome Judy Gill. Not only does our next recipient volunteer many hours at the AIDS Walk Los Angeles, but he also serves the Los Angeles community as a docent at the L.A. Zoo. I'd like to acknowledge Ed Odevick as an outstanding volunteer. Our next guest is a previous Outstanding Volunteer Award winner who continues to show incredible willingness to help out whenever needed in the AIDS Walk office and at AIDS Project Los Angeles. Please help me welcome Tony Sarzinski. As his first year volunteering with us, our next recipient regularly spent three days a week in our office, energizing the office with his positive and upbeat attitude. Such dedication is almost unheard for a first-time volunteer. Please help me welcome John Wilson. Let us give a round of applause to all the AIDS Walk Los Angeles 2,000 outstanding volunteers. Next, we'd like to honor this year's top fundraising walkers, whose devotion to the cause has been a true inspiration. Not only have they talked the talk, they have walked the walk and raised a whole lot of money on the way. The motto of our second-place fundraising walker, Jay Gregory, was "You gotta ask to get." And did he ever. In staff meetings via email and in-person, Jay asked everyone to sponsor him. The result was $15,052 in contributions. Mr. Gregory. It is with great pleasure that I introduce our top walker. This award goes to Ms. Cynthia Park, who for the last seven years has raised more than a quarter of a million and almost $400,000 for AIDS Project Los Angeles. She's basically a team unto herself. This year, her fundraising total was $52,164. Ms. Park. The final group of awards is to our top fundraising teams. The first award is being presented to the top family and friends team, Kids Who Care. Comprised almost exclusively of teen and pre-teen walkers, Kids Who Care raised $35,275. Accepting the award are Leo Beckerman, Sam Beckerman, Joan Kabat, and Ted Seidman. The fifth-place fundraising team award goes to In Memory of Clay Howell Team. With only 32 people on their team, they raised an amazing $39,181. Their team had the highest per-person fundraising average of any of the top 20 teams this year. Accepting the award are Mark Howell, Susan Edelst, Rich Ezra, and Cynthia Ettinger. The fourth-place fundraising team is the County of Los Angeles Employees, who raised With us today are three representatives from the county, all of whom were team leaders for their department. Craig Hirakawa from the Chief Administrative Office and Christine Ruffolo from the Department of Health Services. The third-place fundraising team is the City of Los Angeles Employees, who raised $47,116. I would like to present the award to Ms. Lorene Lopez, the City of Los Angeles Team Leader from the Mayor's Office.
And we'd like the heads of all of the departments of the city who are here today who made it happen to come up with Lorene. Bill Others. We have the heads of any of the other departments here. Okay.
The second-place fundraising team is being presented to the DreamWorks Team. This team has once again demonstrated amazing fundraising skills, raising a total of $68,245. Accepting the award for the DreamWorks Team is Team Leader Liz Gray and, again, the event's top fundraising walker, Ms. Cynthia Park. Our first-place team award goes to Team Time Warner, a tremendous group of individuals who went above and beyond this year. The Team Time Warner more than doubled its 1999 walk total and raised $88,312. It's $88 and $312, excuse me. Accepting the award are team leaders Bernadette Tigler, Natalie Costner, John Donahue, and Justina Wallford. And could we just give a hand to all of our volunteers and top fundraisers? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, one and all. Mrs. Chick? The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chick for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the General Manager of our Information Technology Agency, Jessie Waros, to join me and his very able and worthy staff. Colleagues, today I'm kicking off what I plan to make a monthly happening, and that's what I'm calling Lemons to Lemonade. It's a new award that I've created, and shortly you will all be receiving, in a sense, the fruits of the labor of these worthy city employees. We're going to be passing out lemonade to you, the fruits of their labor. Because what this award is all about, you know, as I do, that we have hard-working city employees who actually do care very much about paying attention to finding ways to save taxpayer dollars, to spend taxpayer dollars better. City employees who actually care about what's right and wrong very much, whether it's their money or not, and who are looking for ways to do things better. That's what these folks are all about. They are people who work in the Communication Services Division of ITA, and they discovered that the city, the taxpayers, were putting out a lot of money to make costly repairs of police portable radios. The city was asked to pay $310 for repairs that needed to be made before the radios could be upgraded by the contractor according to the contract. And what these employees discovered was that, first of all, they could make the repairs, and they could do it in a much more cost-effective way. And then, in communicating with the contractor, lo and behold, the contractor ended up deciding that it could make these repairs for the city at no charge. So what we have here in front of us, colleagues, are employees who maybe don't even realize that they've got extremely good negotiating skills, that what they brought to the table was an improvement on a contractual arrangement that the city had had. And what they have saved us is somewhere between $400 and $550,000. That is a very substantial amount of money. That's a lot of lemons to lemonade. That's a lot of money to spend in LAPD on getting officers in our neighborhoods rather than throwing it out the window on things we don't need to spend money on. And so, it's a great pleasure for me to present all of these employees with certificates, which I'll do in the back, to present the General Manager with the first, but not the last, Lemons to Lemonade Pitcher Award, and to introduce to all of you all of these wonderful people who have done such a good job for us. And if you would, raise your hands and at least smile at the camera and your family. The Director of Communication Services Division, Toon Ong, and Supervisor of this division, Harvey Gluck, Armando Perez, Francisco Gomez, Herman Johnson, Jimmy Tran, John Guaderas, John Wright, Lawrence Hirsch, Tai Yun, and Thomas Lee. I'm going to turn the mic over to Jessie, and enjoy the fruits of their labor. Colleagues, cheers on your lemonade.
First of all, Councilmembers and Councilmember Chick, on behalf of the Information Technology Agency, I want to thank each of you for this recognition and this award on behalf of the Communication Services Team. It's recognition of a team that has taken the initiative to go above and beyond the call of duty, to taken the initiative to find ways to save taxpayers' money. And I think it's an award that this team, as well as this agency, really, really appreciate. So thank you very much.
Well deserved. Well deserved. Thank you very much, colleagues. Can we go in the back? Thank you, and thanks to all of you. And the Chair now recognizes Mr. Savornich for a presentation. Since, actually, have you already called the role? Since we have more than a quorum here, why don't we call the role and make this all official?
First and Chick, Fuera Galanter, Hernanius Holden, Miss Kozak, Pacheco Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, just to do this officially while you're lining up your troops there. All right, just to do this officially while you're lining up your troops there, this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, January 12th. The Council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10:00. We are being viewed on Channel 35, and those of you who are here can see yourselves again on Channel 35 this evening and again on Sunday. There are 14 council members at the moment because Ms. Goldberg has gone off to the Assembly, and there will be 15 by July 1st at the latest. Okay, Chair recognizes Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Council, today is another wonderful day, and the City of Los Angeles and the community in which we are going to celebrate today houses Gardena High School, which is the Los Angeles City Invitational Football Champions for the year 2000. So at this time, I would like to introduce Gardena High School. I would like to ask the Principal and the Head Coach and the players to join me as Madam President, Members of the Council, for the first time in many years, Gardena High School is the LA City Invitational Varsity Football Champions. For the first time, many of these students are visiting City Hall, and we thought it would be most appropriate, as we honored Banning High School the few weeks prior to Christmas for being the LA City 4A Varsity Football Champions, we wanted to introduce you to the LA City Invitational, or 3A Varsity Champions. Going into the Los Angeles City semifinal playoff games in the days before the holidays, of the eight varsity football teams that were playing for citywide positions, the 15th Council District was home to five of the eight championship teams. This year, both the City Varsity Champions and the Invitational Champions are from the 15th District, Gardena High School being the Invitational Varsity Football Champions. So, Madam President, Members of the Council, on your behalf and on behalf of a very proud City of Los Angeles, I would like to present to the Principal the championship plaque for the Invitational Varsity Championship, certificates of appreciation to all of the players and to all of those who have made the Gardena High School Panthers the Invitational Champions for the year 2000. Councilman Savornich, other council members, we'd like to thank you for inviting us to come for this honor. We have said many, many times that our students are the greatest students in Los Angeles Unified School District, and this year, our football team helped us in those steps to help prove that. We again thank you, and at this time, I would like to present to you a little momento from the Gardena High School football team, a hat that indicates the LA City Invitational 2000 Champs. And thank you, Councilman Savornich. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Madam President, Members of the Council, on your behalf also, we will present downstairs to thee, and I have my pal, the Panther, here with me. Just a pussycat around this horseshoe, I'll tell you that. But we will present on your behalf to the team and to all of those certificates of
We got to straighten this out, guys.
congratulations, and also, if the Gardena band is prepared, we would like them to play
It's a good song, though, even if it isn't the Wolverines.
the Gardena Fight Song prior to our departure. Gardena, take it away. Madam President, Members, thank you very much. Madam President, with your permission, we are now going to proceed down to the front of the building for our group photo, and if you hear a little noise down on Main Street, that will be Gardena celebrating their city championship. Thank you, Madam President. If the band and the team could follow us.
Well, they should. Congratulations. Go right ahead. We actually will still have a quorum. All right. Okay, who's going to march this marching band out that way? You need to get started, because I need the podium back.
See that?
Look at that. I turned my back for half a second, and you got it all organized.
All organized, just waiting for you.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Thank you, Madam President.
And everybody else.
Hey, aren't they lovely? All right. Madam President, Members of the Council. Madam President, Members of the Council, I'm indeed very pleased and honored to welcome, if you're going to give me a little quietness, welcome to this City Council Chambers, the elementary class from the Arlington Heights Elementary School. There are two classes here. They're both of the fourth grade classes, and their teachers are Mr. Charles Walls and Mr. J.C. Smythe, and we welcome them, and I know these youngsters who've been witnessing these high schools' success, of these students here today, are going to go on and learn to read and write and arithmetic and become even kinds of persons, as well as doctors, lawyers, engineers, anything they choose to do. They're listening, and I just want them here, Madam President, to be watching on television, and their parents are watching them. You'll be on television tonight. You'll be on television right now, and you'll be on television Sunday at 10:00 in the morning, and you'll be seen. All right. Thank you for coming, and I know you will do well in life.
Please take a picture.
He just took a picture.
Hello.
Councilman?
Hello. Hi. Hello, this is a...
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, who's in charge of this microphone out there? All right. You got it all under control there.
I'm under control, dear.
Okay. Glad to hear it.
No, no, okay. Hey, come on, go sit down.
Remember, guys, you can see yourselves again on Channel 35 at 7:30 tonight. I think it's 7:30, who knows for sure. 7:30 tonight, and then you can watch it again on Sunday.
Everybody sit down, sit down.
Okay.
Sit down.
We're actually going to start our meeting. I believe we are ready to start our meeting.
Okay, first item for approval of the minutes.
All right, without objection, the minutes are approved.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, the resolutions are approved.
Madam President, on the Council Agenda, item number two is a commission appointment, the appointment of Maria Lu Calanche to the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority.
All right. Item number two. Ms. Walters.
Ms. Calanche, we went through the Arts, Health, and Humanities Committee last week, and we're pleased to bring her forward for confirmation by the full Council today.
Anybody else? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. You are confirmed. Welcome aboard, and forthwith on that one, please.
Item number one, Council Office, District 12, has requested that matter be held on the desk momentarily until Mr. Bernson's arrival.
Well, let's do that. Let's move then to whatever's next.
Items number three and four on today's agenda are items which public hearings have been held.
All right, we don't have 12 members here, do we? One, two, three. So, let's hold those, and when Mr. Bernson gets here, we'll have 12 members.
Hold numbers three and five, which are ordinances.
Three and five, I'm sorry. And item four, Members of the Council, anybody want to be heard on item four? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item four is approved. Next.
Items numbers six through 20 are items which public hearings have not been held.
All right, I don't have any cards on those. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on any of the items six through 20? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the Council, any specials? I'd like to ask that we call 11 special.
Number 12 as well.
And number 12, all right. Okay, anybody else? All right, open the roll on six through 10 and 13 through 20. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Sorry, what? Always like to hear that. You can say that out loud. Forthwith on number nine, please. Those are approved. Okay, what's next?
Well, holding on the desk is item number one and items number three and five.
Well, we can't do anything about those until we get Mr. Bernson here, right? Ms. Kozik.
Madam President, I'm not sure we might be able to go ahead and proceed with item number one. I talked to Mr. Wax, it's in his district, and he, I think, indicated he is now willing, he's supporting the unanimous recommendation of the Plum Committee. We did have a hearing in Plum, Planning and Land Use. This is a request for, was a request for a variance for a automotive car repair on Van Nuys Boulevard. It's an appeal of the South, excuse me, the North Valley Planning Commission, I believe, or South Valley Planning Commission, one of the APCs, but we did have a unanimous recommendation to deny the variance, which is to grant the appeal.
To grant the appeal and deny the variance, all right. And Mr. Wax, you're in concurrence with that? Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Open the roll on item one, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. That is approving the committee report, which is granting the appeal and denying the variance. Okay, that's item one.
So, item number 11 called special?
Item 11, let's see, why didn't I call that special? Excuse me, Members of the Council, I asked to call this special because I wanted to try to incorporate into it a request that simply hadn't occurred to me when I wrote the original motion, to ask ITA and Housing to find a way for constituents to send their complaint forms back to Housing, as well as to ITA, so that we get, we're not only making the forms available from Housing, but we're also making it possible for people to return their forms to the Housing Department in an effort to expedite enforcement here. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to add my support, obviously, to it, but request that the departments report to Information Technology Committee, just to make sure that they follow up on it, they actually get it done and incorporated into the comprehensive revamping that's underway for the city's webpage.
All right, well, let's, if it's all right with you, I'll amend it to ask them to report to both committees, and you can decide, the committees can decide whether to do them separately or together. And to, we're also amending it, then, if there's no objection, to include sending the forms back to Housing, as well as getting them from them. With those amendments, open the roll on item 11, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Might as well do that one forthwith, too. Okay, next item.
Item number 12.
12, Mr. Padilla. Push the speaker button. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Also, rise in support of this item, just returned from a trip to Sacramento on League of Cities business. While I was up there, the Governor presented his proposed budget for the next fiscal year, and wanted to offer that as one of the sources to look to in potential funding and grant opportunities for these initiatives. So, with that, I support it, and thank you.
All right, open the Alright, open the roll on item 12, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, and it appears to me we've done everything except the ordinance.
There is special 1 motion which has been brought in by Councilmember Ridley Thomas. Findings need to be made by the city attorney.
Alright, Madam City Attorney on special 1.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a reward motion that the police have asked for on January 7th of this year, 11 a.m., there was a gang-related shooting. They are asking for this reward so that members of the community would come forward and help them find this person, and therefore, there's an immediate, the council needs to make the finding that there's an immediate need to act, and the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda.
Alright, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Alright, the findings are approved, and the matters now before us, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, appreciated if I could get everyone's attention just for a moment. We spend a considerable amount of time talking about the level of crime in our community or our city, and here's an example of a 14-year-old child walking along the street minding her own business with her family. Cynthia Gonzalez, who was murdered. Had it not been for a stroke of luck or a blessing, depending on your perspective, her two-year-old sibling would have experienced the same. The problem of street violence, the problem of gang violence, the problem of gun violence is increasingly a threat to our safety. And it has to be our resolve to address that head-on by whatever resources at our disposal, prevention, intervention, and suppression, as well as stronger gun control legislation. And so this is a motion to apprehend those who were responsible for her death, and to prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law. And I would ask for everyone, as is our tradition, to unanimously support this. There's a press conference being convened in southwest or southeast Police Division as we speak to deal with this matter. 27% increase in homicides in the city is nothing to celebrate. It demeans us all, every single time it happens, and I'm sure on the part of all of you, I can express our deepest condolences to her family.
Anybody else? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that, please. Okay, next item.
So, items number 3 and 5 are on the desk, do you wish to hear public comment at this point?
Members of the council, here's the situation, there are 11 of us here, Mr. Burnson had expected to be here by 11, but his office has not heard from him yet. Without him, we can not adopt the ordinances today. So, Conrad has suggested, and I think it's a good idea, that we, well, we don't have any cards on public comment, interestingly enough. Now, you're on, I know, number 5 is one of the ones we can't hear, we can't adopt today unless we have 12 people here, that's the problem. I know you're here, I don't have cards on general public comment. Alright, so let's, I see a Burnson staff member, what's the word? He's here, okay, hang on.
We can summons.
Alright, so let's go through the housekeeping part of public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council on matters not on today's agenda?
Can we summons Mr. Holden to speak on public comment for an unlimited period of time?
I don't.
In exchange for a...
It might set a dangerous precedent.
A gesture that he will restrain himself for the balance of the year.
Okay, hang on, let's do the real housekeeping, I'm gonna get to you in a minute, Kathy, hang on. If, you can do it if it's not on an item on today's agenda, but you have to fill out a card for us, you can do that afterwards. Okay, public comment, Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Ms. Calander. I just wanna share with the council some good news, that we have 70 acres of the Biona Wetlands in full public trust now for the citizens of California. Play Vista did not renew their option to December 31st, 2000, and Kathleen Connell is going to have a public hearing, State Controller Kathleen Connell is gonna have a public hearing next Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30 at Loyola University in West LA to hear the public's ideas of what to do with these 70 acres. And many of the people wanting to save the wetlands want to see that as a nature park where all the citizens of Los Angeles can come out and enjoy nature, and I think this would be very healthy for our children, and a wonderful, very low-cost enjoyment thing to do. And I just wanna let you know that good news. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period. Kathy, I do need you to fill out a card for it. I've been informed by the city engineer that we're being asked to continue item 5 for two weeks, so without objection, we're gonna continue item 5 for two weeks. Wait a minute, it's two weeks to 26?
The 26th.
I won't be here the 26th, do it the...
Three weeks is February 2nd.
Well, do it the 30th, the Tuesday of the following week.
Tuesday of the following week is the 2nd.
The 2nd? Are you on February, or?
The 29th, how can Tuesday be the 2nd?
February 2nd is Friday.
Back up. Back up to Tuesday.
February 30th is Tuesday.
Back up, yeah, it's January 30th.
January 30th.
January 30th.
Hey, don't confuse me.
Believe me, that week I know the dates. Okay, so that's item 5. Now, item 3, if we could, Mr. Burnson, you're here, hallelujah, let's get to item 3. Okay, anybody wish to be heard on item 3? Members of the council, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And I think we're done.
Motions for posting and referral?
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Councilmembers request to be excused from council attendance, Councilmember Shear requests to be excused on January 17th to leave at 11:30 for personal business, a motion is required.
Mr. Savornich moves.
Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on January 19th and January 31st to leave at noon, this meets policy for city business.
Alright, we...
Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused on February 7th, February 20th, 21st, 23rd, March 7th for personal and city business, meets policy.
Well, if it meets policy, we have to let him do it.
And Councilmember Wax requests to be excused on February 6th, 7th, and 9th for personal business, meets policy.
Okay, that meets policy, we'll let him do that, too, and before you stop, I need to be excused for city business on January 26th.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Pacheco.
You know, we had a little incident at the MTA building, there's a suspicion that it was Mr. Dean's birthday cake that got a little out of control. So, today is Mr. Dean's birthday.
Oh, my God!
And so are you wishing him a happy birthday or not?
So, I'm gonna wish him a happy birthday. Ask.
I want you to know that you two make a very cute couple.
Well, you know?
Alright.
Alright, IT, I need ITA to do a little morphing right now, see what our children will look like.
Yeah.
So, just, that's scary, huh? A little bald-headed kid with a big nose, you know?
Yeah, right. Okay.
Happy birthday, Ron.
Happy birthday, Ron. Alright, I believe...
The desk is clear.
The desk is clear, do we have any adjourning motions? Mr. Holden, you have one?
Performance evaluation and an increase in pay.
Yeah, no, 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 let's, do we have any adjourning motions? We do have some.
Oh, yes, I have one.
Alright, anybody over here? Mr. Holden, you have an adjourning motion?
I would say to announce, Madam President, members of the council, that a long and dear friend, longtime and dear friend, Gertrude, known name is Trudy Chernis, she was the wife of Judge Harold Chernis. I remember them back in 1960, when we had the 61st Assembly District Council, the first Assembly District to which Henry Waxman was elected, and we were very, very active in that campaign, prior there and thereafter. She will be missed by all of her friends of Culver City where she lived for years, and the services will be held at Hillside Memorial Park, Los Angeles, Sunday, January 14th, 2001, of course, at 601 Centinela Boulevard. She was truly a hard worker in the community and a political activist.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, I would like to ask that the council adjourn in memory of Dade Albright, who passed away on January 5th. He was born on the 14th of December, 1931, in Bellflower, and was a lifetime member of the Harbor Area Community and local Wilmington businessman. He was a former member of the Lions Club, the Boy Scouts, the Junior Chamber of Commerce, and the Masonic Lodge. He served as president of the Board of Trustees of the Wilmington Cemetery and was an active member of the Wilmington Optimist Club and Business District Improvement Committee. In fact, Dade served as president of the Cemetery District during some trying times, and his leadership brought great stability to the community and those whose issue was with the cemetery. He is survived by his wife Dorothy, son Richard, four daughters, a brother, and eight grandchildren.
Ms. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council, I'd ask you to adjourn in memory of Terry Steele, who was the owner of Terry's Interiors Furniture Store in Council District 9. He had owned this business since 1961. In 1992, his store was destroyed in the civil unrest, but he rebuilt and came back and stayed in Council District 9. He built, in 1996, he celebrated the grand opening of Steele Plaza, which housed not only Terry's Interiors, but seven additional suites, which are leased to other minority-owned businesses. He is survived by his wife Zenora Steele, three adult children, Dorlise, Terry, Myron, and many friends and loved ones. He passed away January 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson.
Yes, this was just handed to me, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Mary Lo Allegritti, age 84, of Northridge, who passed away January 7th. She's survived by her sons Joseph B. Allegritti and his wife Helen, and Thomas A. Allegritti, daughters Mary T. Goldrick and Jean M. Barnes, and Joan F. Allegritti. Number of grandchildren, and graduated from Immaculate High School, class of 1933, was named honorary founder of the Society of Jesuits in 1980, along with her husband Al. Funeral mass will be held at 10:30 Thursday at Our Lady of the Lord's Catholic Church in Northridge. In lieu of flowers, the family suggested contributions to Mary Row Mayor, Allegritti Memorial Scholarship Fund at the University of Portland. I might add that Joe and his family are old friends and been very involved in our 12th District community for a number of years, and I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Mary Row Allegritti.
Thank you. Call and roll. Thank you, we are adjourned, have a nice weekend, everybody. Have a nice weekend, everybody.
City View, Channel Thirty-five. Your city, your channel. Your city, your channel.